We stop at ten P M, wherever we're talking about at ten, we talk about is your item has not come up. By ten o'clock, sorry, you'll be here next one. So if we don't get through our ten, the last item of our day tonight. Minutes of the fire meeting, which would be two. Does anybody have any comments?
There's a couple of comments.
Okay, on the record, Gary, you talk.
Where it's at the bench, it should be bed.
Which part are we talking about?
Page seven.
Okay.
And page seven. I don't know whether it should be schooling, but it says shooting. I don't know what should be in it.
You have the line, you have the paragraph in front of you, the line in front of you or?
I don't have some.
All right, we'll look.
We'll look, but that's only two comments.
Okay.
I just didn't get a chance to quote it.
We can go ahead with the questions anyway, for those correct.
Thanks for calling today.
Okay. The motion for the minutes of the Zoom meeting with corrections that's stated.
Well, make the motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Paul Taylor, you can go, I think, Gary. I think, one, two, three, four, you have a few.
Five, four, three, two.
Okay, Louie, you ask.
I know, I know.
Okay. Public hearing tonight, there's only one. Usual rules apply, if you want to speak, we want to hear you. What I would expect to happen, you need to stand up and say your name for the record. Simply because we have minutes that are taking some of the important. And so we need to identify the person's treatment. Not an absolute, you can deny it, but we prefer to have your name attached to whatever question is there. The reason for our public hearing is for us to hear you. And you who would know better about some area than we would, neighbors, being a neighbor, covered in the neighborhood. You don't have to be close by to, for us to speak, everybody's free to speak. I don't, only ask, you don't be keep over and over the same thing, if you, an area has traffic problem. And subscribe, so you, one person, you don't have to describe it again, you have to be perfectly fine, just to say, I agree with them, I see those same problem, and save us some time, especially with the busy weather. With what's, public hearing on Frank Brown Road project, the solar farm. Your turn.
Hi, well, it's possible Delaware River Solar. So we were first in front of the planning board on June sixth, and since then, we have no updated information or site plans. We got the go-ahead for the public hearing, which is what we are here for now. We also did the two thirty-nine review that night, and the county has just responded to the two thirty-nine earlier this week with local determination. And a positive comment that I'd like to share, which is that they're glad to see the landfill will be repurposed, and that Delaware River Solar will follow all necessary local state federal regulations, and they also had a few technical comments that Delaware River Solar will respond to. The public hearing notice was mailed to the neighbors on June eighteenth, and the town posted the newspaper, so if anyone would like to go down.
Who's going to drive this project?
Um, so this.
I'm fully concerned.
Woodbridge.
What is that?
Yeah, you know, where he all done used to be. Oh.
Tim Morris, you know, Tim Morris, have you ever known Tim Morris's?
Yeah.
Go to that road and make a left.
You go to the T, go on through Woodbridge, you make a left, it's Tim Morris, and it's down, it's like a dead-end road back above the prison.
Yeah, it's a Woodbridge-ish, it doesn't sort of. Um, but this is what the plan will look like as of now. Um, as of now, it is determined that the, um, this landfill is owns, um, um, I'm sorry, by the town, or I'm sorry. This is the landfill currently, according to the tax cap and to the town, and then over here, this sort of piece that shuts out, is owned by the D E C. So the P O I would either be over going this way, or it would go down below, depending on if or if not this parcel is acquired as a piece of the project. But, um, long story short, this is a solar development, and it would sort of benefit the community in the sense that it would, the, the, the power generated by this would go right back into the electrical grid. So users would be able to subscribe to the local grid and save on their energy bill, see the savings on your night cycle bill, on the bottom of the bill. And that's pretty much it.
Going to the point. Okay, so anybody wants to speak, please stand up, say your name, go for it.
Please come up front, up front.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Mary Adams. So I have a couple of questions. One, I think I remember you saying that you were not clear-cutting to, to create this, right? There's not a huge forest there at this point.
Um, so this is on public, though, I'm not sure if there were any.
It's all grass.
Yeah, grass, right.
Neighboring trees would be.
And how many acres is it?
Um. One, do you mean?
Forty, forty-five.
The property itself is forty-five acres, but the project site would be twenty-four.
Okay, and what about lighting? Do you have a lot of lighting during the year, or is this just going to be?
You mean like additional lights that would be installed?
Yes, I don't know, security, whatever, I just asked me.
So in terms of security, there would just be a fence around the landfill, and there's no lighting needed when it's not construction time? Other than that, it's just a fenced-in area with no lighting.
And there is some kind of maintenance that occurs, mowing or whatever?
Yes, an operations and maintenance plan will be submitted, agreed upon between the town and Delaware River Solar. Um, mowing, whatever, maintenance would occur, these are smart. So if there is anything to go wrong, if and when, they can sense that, they can detect that, and they're monitored twenty-four-seven by a different company, so if and when there's snow on it, it's too heavy, then it shifts of snowfalls, or if, you know, panel fifty-five. Um, this is fixed tilt, so these won't move with the sun, these just stick.
And they don't make any noise?
They don't make any noise, the inverter does make noise, but it's kind of very, it's essentially. This. Right here, yes, so this is the inverter here, we try to usually keep it like sort of okay. There is a hum, it could be very too, if you're standing, I think, a hundred feet away, it's like the sound of a refrigerator. It's not at all ambient, it is, of course, it is, but it's not going to make anything, neighbors are going to be complaining. Yeah, I mean, it's off, it's not, it's only runs operations when the sun's out.
And so we, those of us that live in Machado, or in Fallsburg, anybody can be, because we're noticing that nice guy that lighting is struggling with the competition that has been around now, my electricity's gone up probably three times, not horrible, but you know, kind of unusual. I'm just wondering, we can all plug into this.
Sure, how far the grid would extend, the Green Lock Shell, very, I don't, like this wouldn't connect with the Matt Delso, and if anyone else here does know.
I think their community solar program is anywhere in that township can apply.
Right, so I would assume.
To get the discount, it's like a ten percent credit on your source of electric. There's already several sites in Fallsburg, so I believe it's the whole town.
Thank you.
There's the entrance road from the.
The last one.
I meant, see.
Uh, it would be down, that's, that's why I'll go with the old green hill.
Okay. Good job. Name is Bill O'Neil. Right, here's the landfill. Now, when they flip the fence up, it's not going to create, well, with the wells that's there for testing and everything. Got a whole bunch of wells in there to test. So, D E C's got to come in there, town brings them in, but they can't be fenced in, some of them. And not be closing that road down the bottom, will be for you, where all the slopes are.
Um, for closing the roads, I don't believe we'll be closing any roads.
Well, there's a road that goes all the way around the land.
I see, okay, I, I would, I don't think that's part of the plan, I don't see how it could be. Especially for, you know, emergency operations or.
Have they ever went in here to make any test holes, make sure the ground's going to be stabilized? Because I work for the town, I know what's there and what's not there.
Yeah, that is, like I said earlier, that we got the comment to work with the federal, local, state. Anything that we have to do to guarantee that this won't be a danger or harmful will be done. So yes, there will be test bits that.
The D E C is reviewing the racking system, because it can't, they can't drive piles into the cap. So they're reviewing the racking system, and they also required the monitoring company of the wells to do some tests now that were done, I believe, last month with the D E C. And yeah, so that was part of this project with the D E C and the, uh, the environmental company, that's the consultant for the town, but we haven't gotten those reports back yet.
Now, like, those folks that live right nearby, how's that help us as far as we can, whether we get out of being with it, we're so close to us.
Again, you'll be able to subscribe to the community solar program, which would be the five to ten percent savings of your night cycle.
If that comes through the town, you talk.
It's, oh, you'll have to apply, so if they get going with it, you, you apply, so you're going to be one of the first ones, you should be, next, you should be the first one to.
We.
For us.
Yeah, that's typically the utility company, I believe, that would send correspondence to you, letting you know that, you know, you have the opportunity. Um, you said you're Bill O'Neil, though, we can put a note, and I'll just be sure to send you something. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Let's just close this public hearing.
You know what I like?
No.
You think so?
I might just get open, open at least one more month, uh, just to written.
Okay, so. If we'll have, we'll close the oral part of the public hearing, if you have comments, we, there's a comment, at least another month, which is not longer. The public hearing is fast, fully closed. Hey, so any comments you make, or questions you have, will be answered by the applicant, and we'll have those answers available. Now, uh, on all this, the same items comes up. Is there anything new being added tonight?
No, we're, we're internally.
We just wanted to get the public hearing done.
Yes, we're working internally on this hatch, if you can squint your eyes and see really good, we're just working internally on this red hatch portion of D E C property, so hopefully next month, we will have an update.
We also had to monitor the gas vents for their layout. If there was still gas being released from those vents, they could not put the panels within so many feet, so they had to monitor those vents to see their final layout plan. So, once they figure that out, they'll have to come back.
Has it been any contact with N I C E, can they take the power, can the grid handle it?
I, I'm not sure, I would assume yes.
Well, it's been a problem, I understand, it just proved several of these, and nothing got built, built because N I C E.
I believe, and I'm not a hundred percent, but I believe in N I C E, once you have a project that has some type of approval, that's when you get in the queue for a supplier hookup, and so there's a list, and what was the last project that was on, was it Cross Farm Road, or somewhere, they were like number five on the queue, so they're pretty much waiting a couple of years before they're going to be able to connect, but based on the area, though. But they won't look at it until you have a viable project that's going through planning.
What happens to the site plan approved?
They have to come back.
Back.
They can.
You know it for six months, and then they have to come back and do it again.
Yeah.
Okay.
The home that you got, you'll find out that that might come out of that forest, at least.
Oh, yeah, sure, we have, um, a sort of generic handout that I of course don't have with me. Um, that we just did like a comparison on the Harris Road project, and, you know, if you'd like to go listen, you can, you know, well, okay. We can come up with a report. But again, it's, it's, it's not audible enough to drive a crazy.
You get it on your time, do that.
Yeah. We can do that, we can.
Okay, well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, we said, what can I say?
Thank you, Hannah.
Well, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank.
We want to continue the review. What's needed to take?
Okay, evening, I don't know, was anything, uh, we decided, in this six point nine state, it's point twelve, zero, four corners, plaza project. Uh, so we have, we have a public hearing in March, I was submitted as well, which has just two primary columns, that's standard. And before that, I'm having a concern about the adequacy of the patent basis, how many access we provided for this project. So we had our traffic consultant review and assess the required markings for this type of facility, and the size of the facility. And we determined that in order to make this project work with a patent space, in accordance with the I T regular standards and everything else, um, we have to reduce this project size. So we originally had supposed to have eighty thousand four hundred square feet, the project now is reduced to seventy thousand four hundred square feet in order to accommodate how many client spaces we can fit on this site. So we're going to decide one hundred ninety-seven private spaces per time, or if you look at the strict numbers of time codes, uh, it's, it will come out to two hundred ninety-five spaces. Uh, we don't have, usually not being used at the same time, but if you figure all the separate uses, it's two hundred ninety-five spaces. With an assessment that has been submitted as part of the package to the town, uh, if there is an assessment letter from the traffic consultant addressing that. Um, so I would just like to run it by the board and see if the board has any questions on that, or if you want the G T S to review that, I know G T S.
I already had sent it, that he hasn't started to review, we just got it the other day, but I don't think the board formally engages in it in the past. It's through Keystone, so I don't, I don't think you usually do.
Yeah.
So I sent it, um, so he'll review that, the only thing, I think on Mike's letter, it didn't specify the reduction in the building size and what was changed, so we were trying to figure that out by looking at it, but Mike Riley's letter put those applications. So it wasn't clear when we did our review, but we figured that out.
Okay, uh, the one other thing that has changed based on D O T's input, is that is, there's entrances, which is to the north of the project, also to the intersection or corners. That will be, that's the support now to be a right end, and right out only, so it's not, you, you'll not be able to make a left, or come left on forty-two, to there. Uh, also, traffic index study has been completed, and has been submitted as part of your package, and it's also been submitted to Keystone, which I'm sure G T S will do that. And it will be submitted to the D O T for their review as well.
Um, do you have correspondence for that from them, just submit for the deal from the comment?
Just have the initial comments of ten, I think, as part of the two thirty-nine. So you should have that.
So there's another entrance and exit on the others, on the other end of the property?
Yeah, originally, yeah, originally, it was two full moving axes, you know, and now, and now, we did the traffic, where the, the D O T comments was, we would like to see only one driver, something like that, so we could pose this as a right turn in, right turn out, or this is a one driveway, and that's noted in the, in that study. We also did, that's not a big traffic study, they also did an analysis to see that, well, if a left turn lane won't be needed for that, and, uh, the traffic, including that it won't create that much traffic to the, uh, that a left turn lane would be needed, or is that subject?
And who, who was having that?
The traffic consultant submitted it as reported.
Sort of like the, uh, so the traffic consultant, they should go all around the Friday over at Time East Hill there, and tell me, and tell me if they needed a left-hand turn on the lane.
Well, on my, my opinion, I like parking, no, but I like a reduced parking, it's a tight site, you know, it's going to reduce the size of it. But if it says you need four spaces, at, at the very least, you gotta find some space, even if it's not paid, you gotta have some kind of space, if you can find it on the site, the, if something happens and everybody shows up at the same time, you know, I, I read his report, and I see what he's saying, but I'm, I'm of the opinion that, what if he's wrong, what if something happens, you know?
In the.
There's a ton of people in there.
In the swift, they'll look at stormwater chambers under parking, and raise maybe some of that.
The, the buses, I think, is one of the biggest scenarios that you really got to look at, buses coming in and out. And, and how many buses can be allowed to get in and out? Because that's, that's the biggie spot.
I don't think when, when you throw a shop at a warmest, probably the group that anyone looked at is buses. There's no reason for buses to come in and out, I mean, changing them to their buses, go to stores, but it's not something that, uh, will find a. Moment.
Yeah, yeah, so in Woodburn, the camps all bring the buses into town, and they drop off fifty, sixty girls, and then the buses go sit in municipal parking lots and wait for them to be done. I mean, this is, this is a normal procedure for, for, for Woodburn. So, I, I'm, I'm really concerned.
I've turned it out, I mean, that's, that's not bad, there's, there's no issue for us to come in and out. Uh, it's designed for a full pile of emergency axes, uh, and a simulated truck simulation will be submitted as part of the final submission as well. So it can handle emergency access.
I'm, I'm actually in the process of doing my own, my own traffic study, so I'm going around town, doing the sizes, square footage of the existing supermarkets and stores we have in town now, and the square footage of the stores, like how many parking spots are there? To see that the numbers are going to work, because, you know, these little stores, I think that you have two hundred fifty people, or two hundred fifty square foot per person in the stores, I think that number, if you go, if you go to the supermarkets and all the businesses now, and you count the cars that are outside, and the square footage of the stores, those numbers are, are, are definitely. So, I know the traffic guy's doing his own report, I'm doing a little side study on my own to see how many spots really realistically on a, on a Friday, Thursday, are being used in these parking lots, because.
Another question. Convention center, what do you call that, meeting hall?
It's a flex, uh, place.
So if anything can be there.
So assembly would be fifteen, like fifteen people per square foot, I mean, fifteen, fifteen square foot per person.
Right, the pattern doesn't even work for, for, it works, you know, it's a different criteria.
So the amount of, the amount of convention, flex space there, you have, at fifteen square foot per person, like an assembly space, you could have six hundred people in there.
So what we have is, for every three seats, right, that's the three of the town zoning with a class.
Okay.
So that would make us a six, uh, sixty-seven private spaces for this, uh, flex and access.
So six hundred people potentially would pull up in sixty parts, sixty-seven parts?
And then so there will be six hundred people, but I don't think it will be.
But the space would fit six hundred people by the assembly standards.
Be ten thousand square feet, or whatever, whatever that number is.
How many square feet? I'm just curious.
It's ten thousand square feet, but it's not net, it's gross area.
Okay.
So whatever your net area is going to be, you can divide that as far as number of vehicles, the number of private spaces is for every three seats.
Well, where do we go to get another?
The town's traffic.
It was submitted to the traffic consultant with the certification for this meeting.
Now, this area, you can't use common rules necessarily from other areas, because of the population we have here.
That's why the consultant uses a higher number for trip generated for residential than the standard, so they, they know that.
Okay. The parking, the, the spot is so tight, there's no overflow parking, you can't park along the road. Uh, I think that's going to be a major concern. The other thing is, uh, who are you going to believe, their consultant or our lying eyes, as far as traffic being held up without a turning light? I saw the traffic tonight is wall-to-wall, if you're out there, I see lines of fifteen cars in a row, going either way. Now, those numbers seem a little bit larger than the consultant had.
Again, the town traffic consultant will review that, and, uh, is going to challenge it. Or the D O T will also have to review that, uh, the D O T might want a left-turning lane regardless, but that's, they, they, both of them will take a look at that.
Well. What about fifty-three foot trailers, deliveries in and out? That's.
You can have, there's room for that, too. But typically, these facilities, uh, they do not have, in the busiest time of the week, which is Fridays or Sundays, that you don't have the deliveries scheduled for those days. So usually, that's not, it's not clashing with the traffic, but they can come in, there's two, there are two loading docks there, they can try around. Yeah. That I've been thinking submission.
Why does it say that it's owned by Fallsburg School?
I have no idea.
By the road there. It's including the same parcel, though, that meets about.
There's an ad on it.
Oh, it's a, it's a lead.
Yes.
I got you. Maybe just shift that up onto their own property.
I think we're all in favor of the project, yes, who are very concerned about the traffic and the parking, it's going to be a big deal.
So they do. I certainly am, that I'm very concerned, and, uh, I know that is all, I'm not presenting to be one. We'll have the two, the two traffic assault, just, uh, get together and make sure that it's all worked out to the best, uh, possible, and D O T will weigh in for that as well.
Okay, there's no available property on either side of this project, and nobody's willing to maybe.
Well, they do own both sides of the road right there.
You have this one, you see, I'm thinking line.
Yeah.
So that's right, so there's no other, either property on either side are different. Right, I mean, the only, the only thing that, like, they didn't mention, we can look into it last week, there are more polygraphs for, where later we can get a couple more spaces. This is required.
They do show curb islands every eight or ten spaces to meet the code, you could waive that requirement for parking, it would add like eighteen.
We end up with the.
It would add like eighteen spaces.
I mean, there's a reason for the landscaping. Look. So Luke, you got a thought?
Yeah, that's fun.
One, one thing, in terms of the process, if, um, if it is decided, or the process, the request for a reduction in parking versus the town standards, what is the process for that? Is that, I don't know that this one can waive.
They are claiming they meet it, based on, right, you're not.
No, if you're, I'm scared. There's no shared, um, staggered parking concept in the town, so that, that's the challenge, is there's no, there's no real way for the, the planning board to waive the standards.
So, uh, there is a combined, I think, for the town has.
I, you have to.
But even with that, with your less than what's required, but we, we do have that, uh, you, that typically, if you do a traffic study, you follow whatever the traffic study would say, in terms of impacts or anything to.
The town's code is very specific, and I'm just procedurally, if that is the way to go, I, I just want to make sure that this, who does, and who adjudicates that, I'm not sure it's this board, is my point, I think it's an area. I, I mean, I think it's an area that it's easy to get.
I mean, historically, the, the plan would did waste five new classes, uh, I mean, especially this one, if you have a traffic study which will support that, you, you'd have to provide any mitigation based, based on the town zoning, with the traffic study, when you have trip generation that the plan would believe that may have a higher impact than what the codes has taken passport of traffic starting to be done, which have been done in this one traffic, parking, so I.
But the parking and the traffic.
Questions, the questions of the board can apply to that, or does it have to go to the D E C?
Or, or, I don't, I haven't, I haven't, I'm not sure how willing we'd be to waive it.
I'm not, I'm not, we need to, we need to figure that out.
We have, we have, in a few cases, we have said, you have more vacant lands. It could be grassed, as long as it's available, that if something happens and you need the extra parking, we've said that at the time, on different type projects than this.
The typical waivers you've done are for a community building and development, because the people are within their same parking from their house to that, it wasn't commercial.
Yeah, this is difficult.
And what's, uh, my recommendation would be, let's see what the town's consultant comes back with, and then from there, we can work out the nuts and nills. Uh, it might be called cost prohibitive, but a parking deck or a small garage could substantially add spaces, just like a one-story deck in that kind of bottom right corner, I mean, that could be an option, or parking under the building if it was a.
The use of Jack Knight.
The use of Jack Knight. Will you have an idea of, of what's, what the usage is gonna be? I don't know what the word, the word you call it. What exactly is that?
There are organizations, we're doing events, uh.
Like a wedding?
I doubt that you could avoid weddings. We don't have any other in Southern, sometimes, I mean, you can have a lot of it today, you can have organizations. So making a lot, you know, parties or other types of event, you know, that nature.
I think in, in your uh, research, for how many people per square foot or whatever. Uh, Woodburn Show would be a good example of how many people could be packed into a small area.
That's not to be compared to this one, but yeah.
Well, it's a good example, isn't it? Didn't like that one, okay. Um, this remains research. Really? So we have more information?
So, uh, is your follow-up about the yes, yes?
Yes, I sent it, um, uh, what did you say, two days ago, you sent the traffic?
Who's that?
Tuesday, yeah, so it's on Thursday.
Okay, item number four, moving right along.
Ten bells. So we will answer it much for ten bells. Uh, there, there's now substantially completed set of planning expeditions I have submitted to uh. The planning boards and Keystone. So, um, that, that has been submitted for review, uh, along with a suite for the project. Um, we're basically to get any more input from the planning board, if there's still any more. Input from the planning. We'll let them take care of that, so we can come back and exceed it if we deploy. So even now, we have one manager decent down and we have to recenter the damage that ended up with the other day. So hopefully before the next meeting, we can add a bit of that. And uh, if there are no issues to that, we'll form together. Initial approval at the next meeting. So I would like the, the board to consider drafting. Negative, just putting resolutions, the board should be ready for that. The traffic in that study had been done a while ago, had been reviewed and uh, had been responded to comments from the town traffic consultant. Uh, the other day, the town traffic consultant's central liabilities are paying for the uh, uh, responses from the, from our traffic consultant.
Now, your uh, understanding that approved plans should be accepted.
Not only approved, uh, it's already built.
Complete?
It is complete, it is completed, yes. Yes, it is completed, but it has not been signed opian because I think there's one component that is still missing, which is sewer from either. That's my understanding. They're waiting for that to get there, but it's fully functioning already. I mean, it's functioning, it's not for the original camp, but it's, it's, uh, it includes everything that's needed for the expansion as well. And um, there will be a sign off of that way before this project becomes completed.
Okay, I, I got a couple of things. I know I mentioned the last time about the four can trailers that the help stays in. There's, there's four camp trailers where the original Isma's bungalows was. And it's two buildings there, I believe, that people stay in. And I just wanna be sure that they're fit for people to stay in, where they look like they need to be picked up a little. Yes, well, that's what I'm, I haven't, I don't know, but I just.
So the Isma's, the two, the two old buildings?
Yeah, the two old buildings, people stay there in the summer.
Correct, people do stay there in the summer.
So I just wanna be sure those buildings have been looked at, that they're uh, they're fit for people to be in. And um, then, then the question, so a, a bus will be able to drive in the driveway if they have to? And get in there and turn around and come back out?
Not only be able to, they don't have to do that.
Okay.
Yes, and that's, that's exactly set up for that. Um, both managers will, will be able to validate of any emergency access. And uh, buses will have to come in, there won't be any loading along the. So we have a two hundred some parking spaces for this facility, which will be more than adequate. And there is no vacant land.
Town, town estate park cars?
Yes.
Okay, and also, uh, we can talk about the uh, four buildings that he's talking about, we're gonna dealify them a little bit. We're gonna make them look better for the community.
Sure.
Okay.
There's two, there's two bungalows there, two, two. I think two or four trailers. So when you drive by, it looks beautiful.
I've inspected this camp many times and, and for some reason, nobody ever took us over there. Like, I mean, it was. It's a separate part, it's an off a separate particle, so. It is actually, so, like, the caretaker, when we've walked the whole camp, never brought us over to those other, these houses he's referring to. Like, they weren't part of the camp. So, the rest of the camp's always been in beautiful shape. The buildings have been maintained and in good shape. The other buildings you're talking about, I've seen them, I, I never, I haven't done the fire safety inspections there for like four or five years personally. But when I used to do them, the, the, the caretaker never took me over to those, like, they weren't part of the camp.
Hey, if you want to come over there and inspect.
Yeah, so my next game, especially I'll make sure that they're dressed.
The D U C approved this sewer system also.
I issued it over there for the sewer a year ago, year and a half ago.
Yeah, like I said, I have, I completely did uh, a while ago, it's only the one component that they're missing, that they need to be able to sign over.
Greg, is this the one you wanted, the sewer upgrades we did before you issued a.
We, we've been having problems with the development saying that before we issue C O's that the sewer will be done, though what's happening is. We're having places occupied before the sewer's done. So we're occupying without C O's and the sewer's not done, so.
So this is a rare situation before the project.
Moving forward, we're gonna make it so it's a conditioned sewers done prior to the sewer upgrades, it's done prior to the, the buildings being constructed. So be aware.
And what's part of?
We're having issues, so.
Uh, and will you be, you already said a lot of these are valid or something?
This one, yeah, this one is ready to go, so.
Hey, anybody else?
So, um, thank you. Thank you. Hey.
Next one is very strong. The final food, I planned to allow six thousand, so this is.
So did, did the members get um, copy of? Uh, uh, residential and uh, negative declaration for this.
No.
So. Yeah, um, so in the negative declaration, this is a short form. So from, from our standpoint, um, and we, there are conditions. We have comments, they responded to our comments um, at the planning level. And um, and you'll see in the condition of approval. There are a couple of conditions related to a few loose ends that I noticed. Upon reviewing the most, the revised submissions, so we didn't issue another comment letter, but those. Those would be, those would have been our comments essentially, um, in, in those conditions to address them. Just so you know, so, um, in terms of the uh. Seeker uh, case, I believe this was classified as an unlisted action. I don't remember the date of that. Do, does anybody have the date?
April eleventh.
April eleventh. And. So there, there, uh, I circulated a short form, um. And we can, I can go through in as much or as little detail, the eleven areas of potential impact. No, I would recommend that they, um, they're either. They're, they're either not involved, like critical environmental areas, they can be totally dismissed, or, um. There's mitigation proposed, like for uh, surface waters and uh, small amount wetland and some methods. So.
Yes, I do have comments for the SWIP, uh, nothing that's gonna impact the, the site layout, but there was some comments to. Just labels like the hot zone and different things, but I'll send those. Uh, I do have a list, um, that I can send you.
Okay, so, no, there's nothing between us and a negative back on this one?
Um, no, the, um. The one, uh, let's see, so. Um, trying to remember it was. Yeah, so the Goff's stream is, there is some disturbance on the. So the stream lies in the middle of wetland and there's some disturbance to the wetland itself. Um, about. Yeah, it's a. So that's within fifty feet of the, of the center line of that stream and that's a class B stream, so. Any disturbance to the banner banks of that stream and typically D E C won't go more than fifty feet beyond the uh, center line. Um, uh, would require an article fifteen. Credit from D E C, so that would have to be uh, nailed down if, if there's any.
One of our SWIP comments was to, to flag the clearing limits and buffer and setback from that stream. For that reason, if they need to apply for that permit.
Yeah, so we would need to know, we probably should know too, the, the, where the banks are, um, as well. But the mitigation there would be applying for that on it and then, you know. Satisfying those conditions and also, um, you know, the SWIP, right, um, implementation of the SWIP. Which has, you know, water quality related, uh, uh, preservation and uh, techniques. Yeah, it's, it's.
Yeah.
Right.
It's not, it can't hurt to put that in there, absolutely.
Have you got that in there?
I don't believe it's in the. No.
I mean.
If it's not, then put it in.
It's covered under our comments from town engineer for SWIP, but you can put it specifically in there.
If it's in, if it's in there, then we know it's. You know, we're not making it some, that it's not.
Well, we have, we have the negative deck here. Um, you can add to where I stood.
If, what I would do is, it's in the negac, um, we can add, um, as a condition, a site-specific condition. To the site plan.
We can do the negac because we have that in the, taking care of in the resolution.
And as part of ongoing type of work.
Okay, so, um. The usual whereas, on the, on the negative deck. The, the plan would find the proposal will not have a significant impact. On the environment and hereby adapt the negative declaration first one for, this is part three of the S D A F. Which is annex here two and made a part thereof. That's the operative line. And uh, that's, that's all part, so we can vote on.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so do I have a motion for a negative deck?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
There. Then again, yeah, I have, so we have to make it a deck. Now for the fun part. Okay, resolution developed.
Yeah, so the, um, you know, the, the first recitals are, you know, essentially. Defining the project, um, you know, that is, you know, allowed use in the, in the zone. Um, and some procedural aspects like secret, you know, two thirty nine. There are the standard conditions, um. That are attached to all, uh, uh, of the board's, um, approval resolutions. And so for site-specific conditions, the biggest issue here, and. I don't know, do you wanna talk through this at all in terms of, the, the first? The biggest issue was the, um, the driveway, uh, the response to the county. Uh, in response to the county's comments about lack of site distance for the middle driveway. Um, the, uh, Joel's client, uh, revised the plan so that they use this fifty-foot, um. Access easement further to the north, which had better site distance. So the county would still need to approve that, uh, and that's a, um. Right, but the issue, the, the, I, I think maybe you could talk to, speak to this is. The, your use of that right of way, um, cause in your response to our comments initially. Uh, or in, in Mike Riley's response, he basically disclaimed any knowledge of that, yeah. Was that? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So, uh, yeah, the initial, uh, your initial comments were, was about this easement. There's an easement shown in the middle and you want to know what it is? Well, no, there's nothing really good, I think, in the record for that, besides of the flat map.
There, it was this, in the original site plan, there was a little note that said something like fifty foot right away. I think it, it was actually on the other, uh, plan, uh, referring to that.
So, yeah, so that, that is a flat map and we'll have to check if there's a specific date for that easement.
Okay, okay, and now that's condition.
Yep.
That's, and that's the first condition of approval, uh, is before the chair stamping the plan, a copy of that part, these need to be provided.
Can I ask you one question? We're not increasing any water since you're opening up the land. That you're gonna end up putting water onto other people's property.
Last question.
That's one, that's one of the things. Okay, and if there is an issue, to make sure of site, site-specific scenario. That it's gonna be handled, that should not affect in somebody else's property.
I mean, that's, that's the one with the SWIP that's being reviewed by the town venue and uh. And so the special will have to be done once a week.
And then. One of the, one of the things that I'm trying to get at is. A lot of these projects, when they start and they don't maintain. And then three years down the road, the people on the lower end are getting more water. So I wanna make sure that whatever you do, that with the specific things. That they, they, they have the right, if somebody else's property is being affected, they have something to go. To go back to, if you know what I mean.
The speed is better when built out, wouldn't it?
I mean, as far as enforcement into the future. The town requires a bond for SWIP to be able to repair any stormwater, or if the project isn't completed.
What I'm saying is years down the road, cause you're getting more and more water. There's more maintenance that is needed to keep, keep everything, so everything is running. And sometimes they have to come back and put riprap in or whatever. And what happens, that falls through the wayside, you know what I mean? And I'm just bringing that up now, so that the effectiveness will.
There's a, there's a maintenance manual in, in the SWIP too, so, and that's attached to the.
What happens is, this project has one owner now. He sells it to somebody else, and then what happens?
To go here at the property.
Yeah, there's a, in order to close the permit coverage, that maintenance plan is filed against the.
Great, as long as there's something in there.
And there's, there's also a, um, Paul, there's, there's a, the, the final, um, staff review and inspection standards. Uh, condition is staff made, that periodic field visits and inspection search instructions, that's.
Right. In your view, uh, the county's P P W. The town road had quite a few, uh, pretty well.
Yeah, with the, with, uh, the, with the.
Yeah, I've never seen that.
Yeah, there, well, I think there were some wetlands that may be all related to a different location.
They had a lot of property.
Um, one of the, one of the conditions. Um, so there are a couple of conditions addressing presuming that the county approves the northerly access. There's a few conditions, uh, that would address some of their concerns, so one is. Uh, the southerly, uh, entrance to the warehouse use, which is currently proposed as emergency use only. Would be, would need to be clearly labeled as such on the site plan. And then, uh, follow up to that is a crash gate or some other similar means would need to be. Installed, you know, subject to town engineer approval, um, for. Uh, and, and responding fire department, who will probably not formally, um, so they can get through there. To limit access, right, because right now it's, there, there's no, there's no access control. It's, it's just in a letter representing that it's going to be used for emergency access, so. And then the. There's a informal, I don't know, dirt, yeah, right, yeah, that the county was like. Regardless of this project gets approved or not, that should go away, and. So that was one of the conditions, is that that get labeled as, um, to be removed. And I think, you know, uh, the plan is revised as such, and then, I, I don't know if there's, I don't think there's a demolition plan on.
Isn't this a neighbor's driveway? That dirt?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if you can.
We'll have to, we'll have to process. We'll have to check with the county and see if that's used somewhere.
You showed a retaining wall on one of the plans that would effectively cut access, that access off. Well, that's no longer needed or proposed based on this plan.
No, I, I don't think so.
Okay.
Uh, the one, the one condition that you have that I would like to discuss with the board, uh, you have a condition, condition seed. Um, which I haven't been able to follow that yet. So the town. Told it requires a six foot high wood a big fence along the side of Brady Gars screen adjacent to residential use. Uh, the planning boards can waive their climate about no residential uses around that, or no, no houses. So the only house that we have is on this side. Right. So I would just like the boards to, or when I guess waive for the climate of that, and now. The fence.
Except for the west side.
Except for the south side. This is no.
No, I see. The south side of the property with the guys at home. That, that would need the screening, but other than that, we can waive it. That's part of the.
Let's see, uh, future on the, uh, north side, what's on the north side already?
This is, uh, Paul, we ask. What, what I was.
Okay, no, no, no residential.
But. I don't think there's no way.
The one that's there, it's existing.
It's existing, right.
And it doesn't specify the zone, it just says use, right?
Yep, but no future residential is, would be permitted. Or the current zone.
Yeah, Tom's sanitation and junkyard, maybe, nobody's gonna.
Well, yeah. Here located.
And, and this is kind of bright in the neighborhood.
Yeah. Do, do, um, in terms of, uh. Im- im- implementing that condition. Um, do, do you want to leave it to say the town engineer's discretion to determine the extent of that fence? Or do you want to?
Just specify the property line?
Just do the property line, just do the top lines.
Oh, the property line, are you joining us? So, okay.
Okay, so you're putting language in. What, what's going on, you put the language in there?
Saying like you mentioned, what he does last year.
It's, uh, actually the six foot high wood open fence.
I'd say it's staying like it won't go away.
That property is apparently a foreclosure, so maybe you're trying to purchase it. And put it back into the industrial. That's its own.
I don't know how. There was nobody living there.
Uh, I don't know, it's, it's, uh, abandoned.
A six foot high fence to be approved by. Building code enforcement.
The western lead profit on.
Southern?
That's southern, the western.
What's that?
That's time we're talking about.
That's out?
Okay.
Yeah, that would be better, yeah, thank you.
And so the, our issuance of a building permit, um, the approval from the county for that. The curve cut would need to be some kind of documentation, not necessarily the permit itself.
The special permit involved, any special conditions to the special permit?
So the special permit leaves people warehouses, um, no, not that's it here. No, I mean, and, and it's, um. You know, it's in, it's in an industrial zone, um. Yeah, I mean, the hours operation.
There's gonna be any of that.
There's plenty of truck parking on the site.
There's nobody living there, so we don't care what hour it is.
Yeah, there are residents, oh, seriously.
Yeah, there are residents.
I have any thoughts? Yeah. Um.
Up on the hill.
There's one up on the hill, there's one on the flat. There's two residents there.
They're not, they're not closing them.
So. Yeah.
The one on the hill is close.
Are they in a residential zone? They are.
They are.
It's a circle.
Yeah.
Agricultural.
I don't know, is that here?
We have the. Do it this way. Uh, put in that, you know, when you renew, and if there's no complaints, we're wrong. From the, from the time that, uh, the building's occupied. We can, we come back in the next year, there's a complaint, we can change the hours.
Hours of operation.
You know, when, when we review it, uh, in a year. Uh, if there's any issues, we can handle that. For the permanent, for one year, we do all based on.
When they help. Issue.
Take a year ago, like, probably three years before we.
Well, that's why I said, you know, the business is built.
Right.
Not, not a year of. Yeah, make sure it says that's in the time clock, the building.
Is complete, well, the pre-assurance of a C O. Yeah.
Okay. So there'll be a one year review on that, okay? Anything else we need to? I mean, we've all had, had a chance to read it, uh, those are the only changes.
All right.
It, you need to do that, so the, uh. Motion would be for site plan. Uh, resolution, approval resolution and special permit.
Or to, to adopt the resolution as modified.
As, as modified.
Yeah.
Um. Which don't want to have, conservative, shall we have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
For the second?
Definitely.
Okay, all favor?
All right.
Any again? Done, well done.
Thank you.
Nice to get something, Derek. Okay, the tier room is off. Ever risk will be giving an update. Now, we'll, we'll need, we. It's very cool. Yeah, no. What, I'm new, maybe the background.
Yes, so I'm Jim Bates, yes, keep me forever on this project. Dan Griffith is the new engineer, Gary just hit through. So, as everybody knows, we've been going back and forth on this project for numerous years. Uh, we've asked deeper, uh, when the Z E I F process. Uh, Mr. Griffith and his firm are doing the engineering. And it brought, I mean, doing the engineering, we ran into stormwater situations, so, um. We had to modify the site plan, there are no changes from number of units. For the commercial area, but it was. What was, we had a staff meeting, and, and Arthur thought it was appropriate that it was a big enough change to the site planer that previously stayed by the board. That we should be back in front to give you guys an update. And get your comments and concerns on it. Oh. You can see some of the loans have gotten bigger, others in the square water, and, and I can let Dan, if there's any questions. I can let Dan get in through chambers. Or go where the board wants to go.
Working with the D E I S.
Right, the D E I S, we're working with it, the scoping has been completed, we're writing the D E I S, and Dan is working on. The engineering for the D E I S, and we're doing. All the other fun stuff, including, you know, the traffic people are working and all that.
Do you have any idea when that would be completed?
Uh, preliminary traffic report has been done, I believe that they're working with you both on the entrance, um, and that's. It's in five, I guess, we're working with region nine.
We're, it's got some time, it's got into the fall, at least.
Okay, and the location specifically?
Yeah, you want me to, let me give you a quick, or a quick overview of this?
Yeah.
So, Dan Griffiths, my Griffiths engineering, here we have a island commons, it's a three hundred and sixty acre parcel. Right now, existing, it had three hundred and twenty five homes before, it's got three hundred and twenty five residential homes now, nothing's changed with that at all. Right now, from the plane you saw before to now, we did some stormwater management with test pits and infiltration testing. And we ended up wanting to get a lot of stormwater pond locations in the meantime now, until we finalize at the time. We had changed the road location slightly just to accommodate the grades. And better rock elevations and make sure the houses were in buildable areas. You know, for your savings, right now. As far as access to the site. Access will be to, which right here, forty two up here, and then up here through the existing island ponds up here. Out there, there's two access points, Creighton Manny's going to work with D O T and Region Nine as well. And we know Region Nine pretty well, we'll be diligently working for them to make sure we meet all the requirements. As far as stormwater management on this one is, is the biggest challenge, because of the depth of bedrock. That's why you see a lot of stormwater ponds. Uh, they do have a machine going out there, we're going to try to find some deeper pond locations with better infiltration, so that we can hopefully get rid of forty percent of these ponds. Uh, there is the possibility that some of the ponds below may have to be dams, just to, we have to meet the hundred year requirement for the stormwater. Again, if that's the case, it'll meet all the nearest state D E C requirements for dam safety. And again, that all gets written into the association blog, making sure the maintenance is maintained. So the biggest thing here with stormwater is making sure for the water quality, quantity, that met the requirements up to the hundred year storm event. There's no point source discharge from existing conditions on the site, so there's no adverse effects below the site here. So again, it's, it's the same as before, same number of residents, we just made it so that the stormwater management worked, and. The layout of the road are better with the home locations that you're seeing now.
Okay, um. Much more to be done on site, but this is only for the layout.
This is concept.
Right, concept.
And we're, the next phase is trying to reduce the number of ponds, once we get a little further, this is for the testing.
It's your offer for the top of your offer, right? Where you have all your work.
Brian, Brian, Brian.
Make sure.
Brian, it's not public, Gary, if you can't keep quiet, you're gonna have to leave. Why don't you leave right now, please, Brian?
We have you, man. We've got Geotech engineer here for all the information.
There will be public hearings, and there will be input.
I hope so.
It will.
Because none of you guys have ever been there, I grow up, that's my woods, I've never, I mean, you sold it.
I do.
You have never been there, you don't know what, what you're about to do. You don't know.
I was, I never.
You will get your opportunity.
Yeah.
And so you know, we did go through this whole property ourselves personally, walking in, riding in.
Right, and the, the only thing you're doing now, just so the board knows. If you get a general layout, you're getting the runoff, et cetera, et cetera. We're deciding on access, which has been discussed, there's a long way to go on this particular thing, maybe before the site plan is ready. Or review, when we get the site plan completed, then there'll be a cut process.
Correct.
So we're, we're pretty early, with all the detail and all the time we put in, we're pretty early.
Yes, we, and for the D E I S, we have to get this to where he can do full grading. And, and things like that, so we can come up with all the disturbances and everything else. And we're into that process, it's just taken us, what, ten years?
Yeah.
Probably else.
You're thinking ten years you'll have it done?
I, I, I think hopefully by spring, and you guys will be reading a book about that, that, you know, keep Gary awake at night.
Good. Keep it up.
So what you're doing, what, what, what you're dealing with, uh, D O T, make sure, uh, taking considerations of some kind of way of getting that place from forty two.
Correct.
They've already, I believe, acknowledged that's going to be required.
Creighton's, so there. You were talking to them about that.
Maybe a sidewalk now, if you got people, it's gonna be a main road, and I've got to put a sidewalk, and that's the mobile station, so they got someplace to walk.
I, I don't think we're gonna be able to do that, because we don't control all the land.
They, they talked about, um, using Westport and getting a, the H O A to agree to allow them to use their sidewalks.
The dad ain't gonna stop when they come down the road, because they're close to here, and walking all the way through the place.
Well, if, if you look, the reason, one of the reasons why it is quite a distance to get down to forty two. It's not gonna be a comfortable walk, especially pushing a stroller.
Going from there all the way over to the other place is even longer.
So, right. That's also one of the reasons for the commercial.
I think, I'm probably sure you're looking for the sidewalks, they, they.
Cut right away, yeah, so. I'm probably sure.
The state's gonna redo forty two.
And I do the bridge. Whatever.
Sidewalk. Think about it, yeah. Because right now you got people walking on that road, and it is dangerous. Can't walk it. They walk down it now, what are you talking about, they're walking from mile to other places.
I don't think there's much, yeah.
Right.
Go to, go to the triangle.
Right.
Hope the traffic stops, they walk across the street.
I'm guessing.
Past the gas station, past the synagogue, past the movie house, into town.
Yeah, but something on forty two, that is, that we have to figure out, they're gonna be first.
What would be access through Westport?
Right up here.
Right, um, depending on what happens on the forty two entrance, that may or may not be a major air access point. When, this has been, this is unusual, like, because Westport was owned by the same people.
Mm-hmm.
And.
That road up through there was, was always, because of this, or was always set up so it could be a potential common road.
Just put it this way, every time you showed up in front of us, it was messy.
And it was designed that way as well.
We're getting at, if, if that ends up as being a major action. We're gonna have to look at the intersection of forty two and fifty two very carefully. Because people trying to get, if, if the access on forty two is not usable or encumbered. They'll have to go up to the lighting, we're, take a left on fifty two, go up the hill, now that would go to be a real problem.
Deal to.
A, a point, point of example is yesterday, okay? A young woman with six kids walking past the Centco station to the traffic light. To try and cross the street. To come through the path, ask to go past the mobile station, okay? Somebody's gonna get killed in.
Well, this is my point, Gary.
Yes.
And that is that, in the actual, this will give us an opportunity, we refuse that intersection, maybe it has to. We, we, we do this, we use this as an opportunity to take care of it, I understand what you're saying, I'm, I just.
Yeah, so, the, the other, the other concern that I have is that, gentlemen. On this property was a hotel. Okay, I'm, I'm giving you my age, that's the side of the, okay, it was a hotel. There's a will on that hotel. There's a well on that hotel property, somewhere. And if it's big enough, okay? Good supply of water, that that well be turned over to the town to use for water.
Okay, there were pretty well, test wells drilled on our weather. And I never figured anybody was taking what they found.
Uh, which one?
Uh, they they threw some test wells, we've early.
Gary, that that well that I that you're talking about, we never, I've never found it.
Okay, I'm just.
There's a giant spring house up there, which it probably produced more flow than than those wells combined. Um, but that it's, but because it was a spring house. Can't use it for.
But I know, but I do know it was a hotel on that property, and it had to have a water spot.
I I believe that it was that spring house, Gary.
So you know, you're coming out of forty-two and fifty-two, Creighton Manny has been looking at that intersection.
People will be looking at that very carefully, this is problematical now. Uh, are they aware that the uh, gas station? At that point, is it gonna be rebuilt, there's plans on that?
If you can share those plans a little bit, that would be great. But we are, that's an important exception, that Creighton Manny is working on, we were all two weeks ago looking at it.
So if we can get any information.
You're shifting everything further off the road.
Is there any way to get there?
I just made a note, I can forward. You'll you'll probably have to, uh, since you're not a municipality, you have to submit a FOIA request. Um, with with all of the clerk, but.
What about the infrastructure, the water, sewer and electric? Is that something that you're gonna go through everything? And then if you don't have it, then what?
Well, the sewer and water need to be provided by the town.
Correct.
So, we're gonna be, we're we're, it will be designing it and it'll be set up, but. Any electric.
We had to supply it if we improve the project.
We will be designing a structure for your requirements for the sewer and the water to be all the local requirements, it's a good question.
What you're designing, but what the deal is, how much, how much? Does the town have to offer for your project?
Well, before you go, before you go into further, you may, members may not be aware. But uh, the town lost a lawsuit on this project. So there is some control by by agreement between the applicant and the town, which set up the rules. I don't have a copy of that agreement handy, but that that is in the background. So it's not just a project, it's a project in what was was decided, decided and agreed to uh, in the court order.
So this has already been spoken for. Yeah, but what I'm trying to say with.
The water cows, the water and sewer cows are already in Keystone's budgets for the sewer plant and for the water requirements.
And so are thirty-five other projects. So what I'm trying to say is.
They're not gonna build it until I get the order for that.
Yeah. I hate to see you go through millions and millions of dollars for this and then everything's on a stall face.
No, they're two big boys. Okay, gentlemen, ladies, anything further like question on this?
Mr. Keller, Jack, I know.
Sorry, you've been the strange and the last. Please let's contemporary review of the site plan to allow, gentlemen, please. Uh, these, this is now, it's no business, this is our first contact, what's this? So we get funny up. We put technical review of site plan to allow two thousand seventy-seven square foot mission to existing site plan. Uh, sixteen I A, just blah blah blah. Go ahead, tell us what's on.
Um, I have to wanna do a minor station head in a mix up, they can have, mix up, it's gonna be some rooms for there. Um, they're going to surround, they have probably four word teams, they're looking to build a building around for. Where sort of things that they have, they're they're gonna be sending this building around this sort of things. Um, to you about two thousand to twenty-one hundred square feet total. Um, it can be rallying, they have a eighteen inch, um. Round in the building, you know, out there.
What is your, I think, I mean also?
I, where, but uh, to, what, for the clothes for the pool?
Yes.
Alright, so the la- the last time that you you guys, Sammy, you guys schools for putting this addition on that, we were never gonna see from the roads. Yeah, it was the addition.
That was not same property though, that was the hotel.
Yeah, it was the hotel, but the same, same, basically the same.
Not the same.
This is all different pools.
Uh, three different clusters, this is in cluster number two.
Hey Greg, have you looked at it? Can you answer, it's a good site for, it's a good spot for in their development, uh.
Tanks are already there.
Tanks are already there, I have no objections to it.
The only problem we had when we went to do our sewer, that they had to pay a three hundred thousand dollar bond for the sewer plant. When they built it and it was good for three years, so they wanted that money back, that it's been operating for three years, so we did an inspection. Of the plant and of the property and and there was uh, loudspeakers installed on the pools and the buildings in there that we noted during our inspection for the HOA.
So one of the conditions of approval will be those, it is evening when the town of Fallsburg have external speakers. So they're gonna be disappeared as part of the rest of the.
And when you're, you'll come back in a year from now to make sure it's in.
I don't know, this is something to.
No, whatever, but at least that I gotta come back from now.
The next time they come back, who will remember? They always come back.
It's going to be a two thirty-nine view, it's on higher road. It's going to be a two thirty-nine view.
You don't need it for, think they're building like, right?
Yeah, plus any site.
Modification.
Site plan amendment.
Yeah, yeah, that doesn't, my, I I would send it, if amendment modification is not. If there's no differentiation in the G M L.
Yeah, so we do have some. Basic rendering.
I guess this is a, uh, this is a woman's back there?
Yes.
The reason I that I asked for the elevation is that. Okay? No, I'm not, I'm listening, I'm not, some people say, why do you keep asking for elevations?
No, we wanted.
Oh, why do you keep asking for elevation? For the simple reason that your department can say, stop the project because that's not what it looks like. The prime example is the Woodbridge Supermarket. I, 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 okay, but that's why I asked the elevation. So make sure you drop it, we'll leave it.
Yeah, I have the uh, elevation on, and practically, I have a picture.
I have, I have a copy of the two in my truck.
Watching what it look like.
It's getting closer, every day it's getting closer.
It'll never be close.
Okay, anyway, um.
I have a one to there, it's touching, um, can be, we have, we have the machine, the the machine.
That's tomorrow, so see how.
In O'Sires, that was three sixty.
What are the new thing everybody playing, Chalice, maybe?
That's, that's uh, one of them. Brooklyn and other, all the cities where the block, block church population, they had a sign. They went sundown.
Right.
Chalice is here and did like fifteen minutes prior to Chalice and then fifteen minutes later, but Chalice sounds like it's scandalizing time. Chalice is here, yeah.
Like their alarm.
Somebody came up with stuff here and just uh.
Play your music as loud as you can so everybody can hear it.
And you can hear from Maya.
Over the record.
Okay, gentlemen, we are drifting through our things. Uh, I think we've had only, all we can here. Let us go on. There's two requests, one is the technical review of the subject line change. Which was supposed to be done three or four years ago and somehow it never was, they came in to. Get it done, they had the approval that it had last. So that's what we're doing, we're just catching up.
Good evening, A Virka, be here for Lando's supermarket, how's everybody, uh, this was on two thousand seventeen, this is the exact site of them. Part of that approval that was built, there was a lot line change that was supposed to happen.
Supposed to be filed.
Got signed by the chair. Or at other, and then um, it went to be filed. What happened was the county can only file a tax bill, it's zero balance and it was in between those periods. That's when the new bill and they can't collect money, there's a certain period of time when. Uh, the general window that they can't collect the taxes. Sixty-two, sixty-sixty-two.
But it's like January first, technically your tax bill is due, and I've had this problem with a lot of surveys. It's not due until April, but you have an outstanding balance for those few months and that you're not allowed to file.
And they can't collect also, they can't collect, so that's what happened, that the battle company, well, to the battle company. So we were cleaning up some stuff and we saw that this never happened. I presented a new set, exactly, then set the hunter and moved consultation with the attorney. Felt that we should come back to the board and just to. Just to get it, so basically no changes from that approval from two thousand seventeen, the building is built, it has a C O, obviously. And all we're here for is to get an opening, to get a mess, re-sign the file.
I have to prove it in the bottom, I think. What is the second? More favor? Any yes?
Um, this is gonna be easy as well.
Yeah, they're trying to figure it, so the scene, the outdoor scene we put in there already, that was. The, at the playboard meeting, is that you're just proposing new better new outdoors?
No, 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 well, we got last year, the temporary thing.
You move, well, you moved the dumpsters out of the top.
Correct, yes.
So where is, where are we going now?
No, no, I'm saying all I'm coming in for recertification for another four months temporary. That's all we're doing, we don't know if we wanna keep this permanent, if this might not be working out for us. So all we're doing is, it was a twelve month, last year we said it was temporary, I wanna go for another twelve months. And then we'll figure out if we wanna keep it forward, we wanna do it way, but that's all.
My only concern is is the way they asked that the planning board be, cause I remember for me to come down and approve the. The the department around the the seating area. I think we need some more poster jersey barricades around, in case somebody comes flying in there. Cause I went down and looked at it and it's easy, somebody can easily drive right in where everybody's sitting, so.
So it's kind of the board, just to prove it on condition that we need. What is that?
I'm just concerned about people driving into the, it it was a compact, you're bad, so he's got a one or two barriers there. But I think that somebody gets out of control there, they could, they could wipe out the whole city.
Just for the record, that isn't, is just for the truck delivery.
Well.
It's not, you know, it's not.
Anybody can drive through the door, so, I mean, I drive around through there every time I go through there.
You you like me?
I don't, I, you know, the one thing that I like to confuse them with is. Was there something that the town getting access to manholes?
That, no, that was a diff, that was across the street, that was at uh, Jacob's place, that was Jacob's garage.
Just wanted to make sure if there was something that weird.
There's an existing easement, there's a sewer line that's going through Jacob's property. It's also going through Steinhardt's building.
Yeah.
And but as far as behind Landals, it's not under the building, it's, you know, in the driveway. Yeah, no problem.
So I got two quick questions for you, how many square foot is your supermarket?
It's the building or the supermarket itself?
Supermarket itself, where the people come into you. And how many parking spots do you have, how many parking?
So, so, okay, okay. The answer is, Landals has zero.
But what is the municipal, how many parking spots are out there?
The what, in the municipal parking lot?
Yeah, do you know?
I have to check, I have a map. Sure, East on it with my, with my, I believe, the hundred forty-five.
Okay.
So hundred forty-five serves the whole town, serves most mainstream, it serves mainstream, and now that you bring it up. There was a conversation, one of the conversations with Molly, I was working on, was to move the park and increase parking and.
I think that is still. Showing options being worked, now it's not, oh, I thought it was, okay.
You town warrant doesn't wanna do that.
That's an option, that's a memorial park.
Yeah.
That's not an option, that's a memorial park.
It's, it's already been taken off the table, so we're good.
Okay. Like, it's not to move, well, we're.
No. It's not.
It's not good there.
We're good.
Gary, we're not doing it. But um, again, there's a municipal parking and, you know, so, so there's in the code, there's a section that says if you're municipal.
So when we're looking for the one year temporary permit.
Subject to me meeting the building inspector.
Okay, gentlemen? Okay, motion please?
Motion.
What's that, it can be?
Man, that's something for you.
Alright, good. Thank you. Oh, have a good night.
I'm gonna go, go one of the members, uh, this is Chileno Cemetery. Alright, so uh, this is uh, something that I've approved, uh, that we have to go to the state for the. We came in for the full, full out of the. Uh, cemetery, and uh, they have. They have now a separate trailer that they're wanting to, uh, completing the construction and uh. Both of the four, they've modified the site by two hundred uh, eight or fifteen chapel building, uh, for the cemetery. That's a short one. Compared to how long? Yeah, maybe two.
We're temporary to the.
Are you going to get it? I didn't know.
Gentlemen.
Oh, so I got several things. Can you put it, can you give a panel?
There are how many public parks we've raised now?
No. So, so there's been a lot of. There's, there's been a lot of controversies about this project. We've discussed it before. The neighbor, several, a couple neighbors, uh, several neighbors actually. I have three neighbors of. First of all, the lighting has been addressed. It was the, the last time this place came for approval for the expansion of the cemetery. It was supposed to be, uh, the lighting was supposed to be addressed in the last planning board approval. It never got properly addressed. There was actually no lighting in the last approvals. So right now there's a light pole in the center of the cemetery that shines four directions and it. Blinds, it blinds everybody. It took me months to get them to shield it. So the lights are kind of shielded away from the neighbors' houses, but. The, the light ends up being on. It's on a timer and I've been there to test it, but it ends up, they're telling me it's on all night. It's only on like a half hour timer. You can only set it goes off. I've checked it. But the residents sent me a picture that it ends up down in the middle of the night. So. It's been an ongoing problem between the neighbor on the left, the right, front, the side about the lighting. I think the lighting, I've discussed it with the, with the people. They should be some poles perimeter lighting and shining in towards the place. Uh, instead of one in the center shining outward everywhere. Uh, so. Uh, that needs to be addressed. A little bit of screening where this trailer is on the road. There was an issue with the, the, there was a section of pine trees. It's missing right in that section where they put the trailer. Uh.
Yeah, there's nice.
They did nice screening down the whole road, but where they put the trailer, it was an open spot in there and that's where they put the trailer. Yeah, so that needs to get addressed.
They also did all the clearing without getting permit.
Yeah, they never filed, so they. Uh.
They never filed?
They never filed.
They never filed for the permit, for the, for the. Uh, they went and did it. Uh. Mike Riley was made aware, the slip was done, all the stuff was done. Mike Riley put up the slip box, but they never came and they got an permit. They were done by the time. By the time we realized that they were all done. I mean, there was nothing left but a pile of woodchips. They had it all cleared. Cause I stopped them. Because I stopped them.
Some of that. That's supposed to be screened.
No, no.
No, no. Screening is there, but no, the, the L D I's or the limits of disturbance were marked out. Mike Riley did his inspections there. Uh, it's just that nobody filed for the permit and I was kind of. Holding the permit until they resolved the lighting issues I had there and. And the other issues. Uh, one more thing. When the cemetery got, all the residents are, have got together and wrote to building department a letter. That when the building depart, when the. When there's, when this project came before the expansion. None of them were notified properly. Now you did the, you did the mailings and you gave me proof that you mailed everybody, but everybody said. That they never got the mailings for the expansion of the cemetery. And they brought the labels, the shipping labels to the post office and the post office said that they. Right. And they, none of the tracking numbers on any of the shipping labels, the post office could track that they ever got delivered. On any of them.
I can probably still show you now.
So well, just, I'm just saying this is, so they wanted, the neighbors wanted to, the neighbors wanted to pursue a lawsuit against the cemetery. So I think that anything going forward here, we should involve a pub, another public. Are we allowed to add this? For another public hearing to the stuff that's getting done here or is this an amendment?
It's a site plan amendment, but we can do the public hearing if we want.
I, I think that we need to. If we, if we approve this, this amendment without the public around, the people being notified, I think that it's gonna.
If there's a concern of the public, then we should have an open public meeting.
No, we have, we have a public meeting. Well, we have a formal hearing.
A formal hearing.
I, I would like the ne, the neighbors that are. To be notified. Okay. All right. I just want to put this, I just want to put this, this, this has been a, this has been a very controversial. Thing for a long time.
You've seen cameras before.
Yes.
Videos from the site. Didn't match what to their complaints.
So yes, I'm not saying that some of the complaints weren't verified. So there, there's been a lot of back and forth, but.
Lights have been shot out.
Yeah, there's been bullets. I have pictures. The lights have been shot out by bullets. So.
It goes to be. Should we recommend? That internal lights be the downward lights?
They are now. So they, they have shields on them now. Oh.
What I'm talking about is if you see a lot of areas now. The lights just shine straight down.
Yeah.
Okay, there's a shield. It's right down. Yeah, they cover an area and it don't disturb the people around.
Darren, so. If you're going beyond that, recommendation is instead of having. Central downwards lights. Having outward asking the outside corners pointing in. So we're beyond.
There was no lighting on your.
He went back. It should be.
It's downward. It'll be. Coming in from the side instead of house in the center.
Right, yeah, but that, that would fix.
So we do, we do have a, a light pole proposed on the site plan. So it says three light pole, all lights to be dark sky compliant. Which is what you're referring to, dark sky compliant. So you don't have extra lights built through the neighbors.
Greg has proposed instead. That you have lights on the periphery pointing in and that solves the problem instead of one in the center.
Well, I'll, I'll have a conversation with the operators of the cemetery and see if that will work. If that works with them, then I don't see an issue for them. I mean, otherwise they can keep it shielded and.
Yeah, they can keep the pole in the middle, but those lights should only be able to field to the back. And then the ones towards the front area, those poles should be more outward shining down. I just trying to keep the, the residents that are around here happy because the, the cemetery, the, the services tend to happen. I, I believe most of the, you have to be buried within twenty-four hours or as soon as possible, right? So, so that they hold the cemetery, the, the services at ten o'clock at night, sometimes eleven o'clock at night. They, they come in at really. You know, whenever they need to, to, I mean, it's not like the, the, during the day holding. So this.
Well.
Operating at all hours of the night for, for burials, uh.
Something we weren't aware of when they approved it.
Yeah.
So. It's gonna be one of the conditions. That you need to work with for. From the lighting. And then we've done prior to the building.
One, one option too, for you to consider is a photometric analysis to. Analyze. So the, the standard versus the around the outside, probably more expensive. Running all the conduit and all that.
I had asked this, this cemetery owners to come back to, to us, to come back to the planning board to review the site plan. And then they brought up to me about adding some stuff to the site plan. So let's all address it at once. So come back for an amendment. They involve Joel back in it and.
How high is the pole?
Uh?
How high is the pole?
It's pretty high.
So I'm kind of. Don't have to be.
One can come up with.
We'll come up with, we'll come up with a left side. We'll propose that it's.
An hour in operation. We're gonna be looking at that.
Only talk to God.
I'm just saying. If it ain't charged, there's no such a dollar. You don't have to be terrified at night.
What do you mean?
I mean, you know, I understand, you know, you want to bury them for, you know. I mean, you can wait till the next morning to do something.
Well, if you'd be a little bit more, but. Very sensitive. It's not about twenty-four hours. It's. That, that can be very sensitive. So I don't think. To that. Um. We'll, we'll definitely work with the law enforcement, come up with a minor plan. Um, so I guess. What's now for the planning, what is the schedule for the beginning for next month?
You got a poll down. For no planet. Send them a copy of the original modification if you want. So.
You'll need a renewal of the temporary permit for the. Sales. But. Which is temporary for how many years?
No, I just gave it to them. They put in last season.
Okay.
And I gave it to them temporarily because. They told me it was maybe temporary and then they, they decided they want to keep it. And. And if it, if it was in the.
People, they need it on site.
If it is in the middle, if it is a trailer that was just there for the construction project, like all our construction projects. Have a construction trailer outside. It, it essentially is a construction trailer, but they want to keep it there. They, they. Okay, gotcha. Okay. Sure.
Put that together for five days next month.
Which is, which is all. We showed, we showed the cabinet, we showed the.
You're trying to also ask for, uh. They asked me for a building for warehousing. For lawn mowers and the equipment for the.
That, that will be all in that building.
Oh, it's gonna be part of the chapel building? Okay.
It's a divvy building, it should be enough for that.
Okay. I, I was just wondering if it's gonna end up being another building.
Chapel and storage.
Cause they have an excavator for digging graves and a tractor for mowing and stuff like that that's outside currently. So.
Right, so the mis, the misnomer of all the chap. Chap will. In any case, uh. The lighting will be an issue. Which hopefully you'll have a solution after public hearing. People know what lights in your eyes before us. We're gonna hold this thing hostage. You don't have to vote here. Okay?
So we have your public hearing in August for that.
You'll apply for it.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh.
You should let, you should let him go first. No, his ladder.
Yeah, I'll say it aloud.
You want to, you want to listen in it?
Uh, we still have to get to number five. Five. Luckily we know this rose world.
Maybe everybody's. Marsha, the applicant's route is online. It should be. And perhaps somebody from.
Yeah, I'm looking for him. Or there he is. I'll unmute him.
Okay. So, uh, yes, this is the infamous Rose Road. And I think that when I was here last time. I said to the board, what I'm going to repeat tonight. Uh, which is that this applicant is. Was. We.
I'm sorry, I. Didn't hear.
Got a lot of background there, Ralph.
Yeah. Uh, can you, Jen, could you let me share a screen at least so I could show the drawing? I have background, you're saying?
We'll get there.
And you, oh, so let me go, let me go turn off the, uh, the radio in the other room.
Please continue.
Right, I still see her, you can't see her. Uh, so. What is happening there now? As of this moment is absolutely not. Uh, so the site is unoccupied and vacant as it should be until all the required approvals are paid. Uh, Ralph will speak about the details of what is proposed. Uh, we had a meeting with staff. Uh, pre-act meeting, we went over the basics of what's what to get a briefing about that. My basic role at that point was to talk about two things. One, that there was not going to be none of the. And the second. Which we do need to get to regarding not only this application, but by. Is that these are both the same religious use. These are religious educational facilities. And so the decision is going to need to be made about that use issue. Both applications will referencing the other because that's where all the materials went in. To counsel on, on the use issue. So that's something I think we need to resolve not only for that application, but for this application as well. Okay, so just to refresh your recollection, what ends up happening with these facilities is have the same educational program. Here in the summertime as they have during the remainder of the year. Saint Rabbis come up, say. Collecting religious continued, their religious education up here. Um, so I, if Ralph is back, Ralph, are you back?
Yes, I'm back. Yes.
Ralph, I'll turn it over to you to brief the board on specifics of what is.
Mm-hmm. So. The property is located at sixty-three dash seventy-three Rose Road. Uh. And we're looking at a fifty, fifty acre parcel. Of land on which right now there are two. Existing residential structures and the four. Um. Structures that were built previously. I mean, excuse me, three structures built previously and the barn. Uh, so the intent now is to. Provide a. Parking, everything required for this facility from parking to drainage to. Uh, septic systems, water supply. Part, you know, uh, interconnecting pathways. And stormwater management. So what we've done. To start, let's, uh, I can concentrate on the area where the existing residences are. Right now there's mostly a dirt drive in this area here. And we'll end up making this a twelve foot paved driveway with several parking spaces that would accommodate the parking for the. Two residence buildings which will be converted to two units each. The existing wells that are providing water to supply to those buildings remain and so would the existing septic systems. Uh, what we've also done is on the opposite side of the Rose Road. In the event that, you know, like a weekend event or something where additional parking for visitors is needed, they would park in this area here and they cross over. And walk through the. To the path and up to the facility. Um, what we've also provided. So the main access to the, to the buildings here would be the, this access drive here. With parking for. With the twenty-eight parking spaces here. The number of spaces may or may not, will, will have to be refined based on the actual number of. Uh. Participants in the program. So that will refine that. There's, uh. What we've also provided. For fire protection, we're providing a storage tank and a booster pump for with it that would feed a fire hydrant either here or here to provide fire protection. If, and to allow buses to enter here, buses. There may be smaller buses, but in case, just in, as, excuse me. Buses entering would be able to come up to this point, unload in this area here, then back up and. Get back and then return back out to Rose Road. By the same token, for the fire access road, we've provided this fire access U-turn in here. The facility, we would place two volleyball courts roughly in this area. And, uh, that's the recreational facility. Further out. We would be providing the, uh, retain, uh, let me show you this one. The existing, the proposed. Facility will need water supply and as such. That water supply will have to meet the D O H regulations for. Uh, community, non-community, non-transient water supply. So that means two water supply wells we placed at the back of the site. And your feet of. Uh, treatment building and or pump building or infiltration before it is fed into the, uh, the new, the new buildings here. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to, uh, respond. Oh, one other thing. I, I must, I forgot to mention that. We did retain Jim Bates to, uh. Delineate existing wetlands on the parcel. They have been delineated. We have his report. He's done his, uh. And speech indigenous species report as well, and that would be part of the site plan application. We would submit that. None of the wetlands are D E C. They're local wetland and, uh. Jurisdiction, so.
Where is your entrance and relationship to the one that was built, uh? When those, where the barn is?
It's in the exact same location. We, uh, we kept that. The entrance where the gate is right now is at this location and we kept it there.
Have you started drilling the other wells yet?
I'm sorry, what?
You started drilling the other well here.
Drilling wells? No. Now we'll have to, for any well drilling, before the wells can be drilled, we have to provide a plan to the health department. For their concurrence on the well locations before any well drilling and testing can occur.
Right. And a bond put up for neighbor's wells and stuff like that to get it out. We take care of that.
They don't put a bond for that. They have to monitor the well.
Yeah, the monitor.
They can't use those wells or. Use with. So that's part of the part five analysis by the D O H.
All right.
For the two new wells, yes. The two existing residential wells don't fall under their jurisdiction. They're just local jurisdiction. The existing well that's by the barn is too close. The existing well that's by the barn is too close to. Uh, contaminant contamination for, uh, sources and would have to be abandoned and decommissioned. Oh, that, yes, yes, but we've placed them within. Their mo, you know, their wells are, the two hundred foot buffer circles are within the entire property, so. There should be limited impact, but again, you're right, they have to be notified and things have to be tested, correct?
I have, I have a couple of questions that I'd like to ask. Those three buildings have been built on, I recall, through a land, okay? Are they residential?
No, these are.
Are there houses, bathroom?
One's a, one's a classroom building, one's a synagogue, and one is a.
You like a meeting room.
And they were built without any permission, correct? Okay, there's no plans?
There is, Larry Hartman is, the, so, is part of the court process and whatever. Larry Hartman was there, an engineer was there and, and has drawn plans and is gonna be. Essentially taking responsibility on the buildings for structure.
The questions I'm asking, okay? They were built illegally. In an agricultural zone. Correct? The other question is, they were fined forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars or whatever, has that been paid? My question, my question is, has that been paid?
They also.
Measure to correct the violation, they had the rights to be before the board.
And they were required to be before the board.
So the, the answer to your questions is, before this goes forward. The amount that is required by the court to be paid will be paid in full. There is a period of time to do that, and we had that discussion at the pre-act meeting, it was brought up fairly by staff. We made the commitment, clients here said personally, yes, it's going to be paid.
The reason, the reason I asked the question, if that, if that payment has not been paid yet, why are we even discussing?
Wire, the applicant is properly to come before the board and go through the legalization process. So it's not like anybody is trying to play any type of game of doing something where they don't pay or they come in. This is all pursuant to the court order, so, um, I was, I had a role to play in creating that court order. I wanted it to be mandatory, or to be honest, because of what you said last time. I wanted it to be mandatory that the court was ordering, and why anybody has to take anything's worth. The court was gonna order the property on, I'm moving to town and legalize it, and so when you ask, again, typically fair question. About the buildings that were illegally built and are there plans, you bet you they're having. Have to be plans that are put in that show those buildings from an architect, and show what those buildings were built. And make sure that whatever was put in there was done in accordance with code, not only in terms of design, but in terms of inspection. And if it wasn't, there has to be a correction made, correction has to be shown on the plans and all those things happen.
Why are we even discussing it if the payment's not been made? I get, I get it, okay. Okay. And it, it isn't my question.
This is a.
Start of the very beginning of the process.
Right.
We just didn't wanna come in and not, and, and assume that whatever concept was there, frankly. My guidance, I said, look, you have a situation, we have put in all this stuff illegally. The, the first thing you do is you come to the planning board and you say, here's the concept of what we're going to do, given all of the illegal stuff that happened. So that's why.
Give you a concept, uh, how many people are we talking about?
Yeah, I, yeah, how many occupants are you saying? Occupants and staff, I was told it's gonna be somewhere in the range of fifty, um, however, that would. It could vary, I gotta, I have, we have to refine the numbers, but preliminarily, we're looking at about fifty. It might be more, I mean, I, I don't know the exact numbers, I'd have to defer to, uh. Yeah, I mean, I, I can, I would have to defer to the owner and the, uh, architect to come up with the exact occupancy numbers.
An architectural question because of the capacity of the buildings that both house, um, the. So that is a number that I'm not sure. Yeah, I, I thought that's a number myself, it's higher than.
It might be, uh, uh, Jacob, I, I mean, uh, Steve, I'm. Going by memory, I'll have that, and I'm not the architect, so I really can't tell you who the occupancy is.
So you're gonna have to, I mean, you're gonna have to propose uses for each building.
Yes.
And the, I know there are changes that will have to be done to the, to the barn, it was converted to like a dormitory. They're gonna eliminate the second story, so then. Um, who, he's, uh, Ralph is doing the, or Larry Hartman is doing the design. So Larry Hartman's designing the building for prior occupancy and so. And those have to be based off the Department of Health regulations also, so, so. I guess we'll have a total occupancy, once the buildings, once Larry, and I think Larry or Hartman is on tonight, right? They can tell us what they, what they propose.
I don't see him.
I don't see him joining us, that's why I'm questioning what the number is myself, so. I mean, though, all of that, not all of that information as far as occupancy and, um, usage is gonna be part of the site plan approval application package without a doubt.
It'll be a narrative.
There'll be a full net, we'll give a narrative of the project, we'll provide architectural plans and elevations for each of the buildings. Designs of the septic and water supply system would be. Preliminary designs of the septic and water supply systems would be included. So, you know, that's the intent to come up with the, uh, site plan approval documents and include most of, all of that information.
For the next time that we're back, we'll have the numbers for. Uh, students and also.
This was a farm years ago. Okay. Is there any farming or hanging or anything that's gonna be kept to the agricultural side? Of the, of the design for this project?
I'm not aware of any, I haven't had that discussion with my client, but I'm not aware of any, but I'll answer that question for sure for the next time.
So the dynamics of the farming or the horse farm is gonna be completely out.
As far, as far as I know today, the answer to that is yes, but I will confirm it with my client to be certain. The reason that I'm hedging slightly is I haven't had another client heading, and I believe the property is. Where they have a terrible farm operation for, um, a certain, uh, orthodox case of challenges. And so I don't know if there's gonna be something like that that's gonna be built into this, but I will, I'll find out, I just don't.
I'm just trying to, you know, to. You change the dynamics of the project, you know, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it was a horse farm once upon a time, this is a very different use, I hear what you're saying, and I'll find out whether there's any plan. We will have any element of that, uh, incorporated into itself.
Or more buildings, you know that?
I don't, I don't. Well, that's the reason for putting the concept plan, because the concept plan does not limit it, I don't believe. To the existing structures, am I remembering that correctly, Ralph? I'll find out, uh, what the experience is there. I, I can't tell you that they'll never be back in the future, but what I will say is just whatever is reasonably foreseeable now, yes, we'll come back.
Ralph's off, but the driveway that was, I believe it was put in for those buildings, we just wanna see the site distances to see if that has to get shifted. Cause I wouldn't consider that existing.
But just to make sure that.
No, we haven't gotten that far yet.
It hasn't been done.
Well, and you, you concerned about the fencing, I don't want to.
As part of the court process, Greg and myself with Ralph did go through the entire site, everything that was done. And, and that was documented through that.
So are you changing any of the zone?
That, that, that goes to the use question, that's what I brought up in the beginning, so our, our, as we've said, but as I've said. As to build my into our this application, that is a religious, uh, use and that they allow. So there's no, there's no plan on our end to change the zoning now. If council comes back or someone else comes back and we have an issue about that, I'll confront that issue right now, so.
Yeah, similar to mine, it's a hard, this one, we're seeing is a religious use where it has a house of worship. An accessory uses to the house of worship, so it will fall in that criteria. With an ag district, house of worship is acceptable, so it would fall in that Oscars.
My, my only, uh, friendly amendment that, uh, accepted is that it's not an accessory use. Um, the religious education use is a religious use itself. It's just part and parcel of it, you can use any example you want. Well, federal certainly picked up on that, this is. You can go pretty much anywhere and you'll see that if you get a Catholic school, you just use the most common traditional example. Um, found to be a religious use always, so that's been litigated, and I provided the case in my memo. About how long it's been that, uh, religious education uses are considered religious use.
Yeah, Ralph's back.
Yeah, apologies, I, my computer shut down on me unexpectedly.
He doesn't look impressed.
We'll get, well, I'm gonna get you, I wanna get you some additional information, you want us back again on concept or?
I mean, I can get the septic testing that, uh. You'll need an acknowledgement from D O H on the well locations before they get drilled.
Yes, of course, yes, we're gonna, as part of our site plan application package, we're gonna submit. Just prior to that, a location map to the, uh, D O H on the wells. And, uh, we'll have septic testing done in the next few months. Uh, Hayden, do you, does the, Hayden, does the town need to witness the septic testing, or is it just my office?
You submit the testing, uh, to the, to the town.
So we'll just witness. But you'll be on the site or?
Uh, we don't require it, right, but you can notify us when it's.
All right, so I'll notify you and we will witness it, so.
Be done. So, uh, this is an existing place that. Uh, which they are now looking to legalize. And they want to add another story into the building, uh, that serves, that's essentially one of us.
We can stay within the height.
It's in the, it's in the MX zoning districts, and they will stay within, uh, all the requirements.
And maybe fire stays? So the, uh, I have a couple of little concerns here, the original building, I believe. Had some kind of, uh, it was a single story block building, I believe it was. And they built a second story on it about five, six years ago, if my recollection is correct. All right, well, I remember when they built a second story on there. Now that we're adding a third story, we're gonna need a struc, we're gonna need to have somebody involved structurally for, for. For that, and then if they're going three stories, it's gonna be three stories of upgrades, so they're gonna have to fully sprinkle the entire building, so there's gonna be that, uh.
When they went from one building to the other building and put that walkway across.
That, that, you mean, you're talking about currently?
Yeah.
So two separate properties, the walkway doesn't walk, it's not continuous from one building to the other, it ends on each side, but they. They're, they're two, they're friends, the two business owners that are, that are friends and they, the businesses, they're allowing the business. The businesses to. To walk between each other, correct? There's not a permanent, there's a third walkway between both businesses, yes. There are two separate ones, one's sushi, one's. There's like, there's two.
They don't, uh. Since they own the place, I mean, they've, they've approved the law to this place, so. They can, they continue to approve it, I mean, yes, they put it on.
I just happened to see, I just happened to see the walkway between the two buildings.
Yep.
Yes, so there was a permit issue last year or beginning of this year, uh. One of my coworkers issued a permit for the deck and the seating area or whatever, it was, it was all code compliant, uh.
Starting to get up the track.
So we have a couple of things with the, the storage container, so the storage container, uh. It, it, it has, it's had a little bit of controversy that it was put there. Uh, commercial zones allow for storage containers, but MX zones do not allow for storage containers. I don't believe storage containers are allowed in, in mixture zones. Yeah, I, I believe it said that.
Storage container's been in it two years.
Yeah, but it's been in violation. He's been, the owner, he's asked the owner to come in several times to take care of it, uh, he, uh. He was looking for somebody to, he was looking for somebody to, to take care of it.
And here you are.
So I'm, so I'm four, I mean, four months late for him is because of me, I'll take that away.
This has been an ongoing, yes, uh, he, he had put it in not knowing, he couldn't put it there because he saw other businesses had the storage containers for the, for the summer.
Street has one, which is commercial.
It's allowed, yeah, so you're, the proper street is commercial, you're allowed to have them there, but. MX, which is directly across the street, is not allowed to, so. It, it, uh, he put it there not knowing he wasn't allowed to, he told me he had to remove it, but he, he uses it for storage and refrigeration. Cause his business isn't big enough to hold all his stuff that he needs, so he does need the extra storage, but it also isn't legal. So we're, I asked him to come and remedy it, make it correct, so.
Joel was just, just for what I did for the meter. Um, I don't know if you, uh, all draw by there and look at that, basically, they painted that, it looks, it kind of blends in. They put it on, they put some screening around it too, so I think it looks, it looks okay, the look of it is.
They usually have a boat on top. They used to have a boat on top.
Some people have liked.
Some people didn't like it, so it was empty, so it has been removed. Well, also, if that is a condition of an approval, they can put that down.
It's not, it's not in the boat period, it's in the, it's in the, it's in the storage container more, I'm looking it up on my calendar. Uh so maybe, I've got a couple of emails, concerns about this, uh about the lighting. Uh we have residents across the other side of the lake. Who have always been unhappy since these restaurants have opened about light layer across the lake, so. Uh there was concern in an email that I responded to somebody today that uh. The extra third story, the extra of the building's gonna create more light layer, so that should be addressed when you're coming back.
And by the way, I appreciate the feedback that I'm getting at first meeting, so that's where we can get the work.
Yeah, and, and, and the, and the, and the restaurants have also been exceeding their hours of operations that they agreed to, so. Might as well get it all out right now, right?
Sure. So when you say what was originally a, a agreed upon, is it a planning board?
Yes, I can, I can send you the agreed hours operation and the, the lighting stuff that.
Yeah, we'll send it to you, so, sorry.
I'm gonna send it to you, I'm all day, if that's okay. Uh something came up. Been here. They're roofing. They'll all be there, make sure they all, so fast.
I was trying to look in the goal, but like.
Sometime, I'll find it for you. If I don't find it tonight, I'll find it for you by Monday, that's what I'm saying, I need a variance for the, the container.
Okay, so you're saying a variance or would be a use variance or?
It would be a use variance. If it's not permitted, right? If it wasn't permitted in the zone, it would be a use. Would be a use variance. Um. You gotta be going across the street with a, with a hand truck.
Well, I think they'll have to put a crosswalk.
Correct. I think it is three ten five dot twenty six.
Thank you.
Storage and I industrial P business, A G A districts, is that it for you? Yeah, I think so. Three ten five twenty six. Can you read it a little bit?
I'll let you read it.
All truck bodies tracked through the ice cream, they should be okay, it must be true, but you can force an officer proof, which will be issued for. To exceed six months. I'm still used to using tablets and stuff.
No.
No, I'm done now.
Come on, Adam, help him out.
B I and ag storage containers shall be prohibited and subject to use variance approval. We approve replacement to exceed eighteen months.
I got it.
You got it now?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, I knew it said it somewhere. And that was brought to my attention, that's where the violation stemmed from, that code section was brought to my attention uh by a resident and uh it's uh.
Yeah, so um. I guess I would ask for most to be agreed with the Z B A, that's how they choose to go that route. So we can go to the zoning board next month. Okay, we're asking for approval of the storage container as long as it's properly.
You can't have it.
Why don't we just go to the town board and ask for a zone change, because I believe the next property where they have these all.
Not sure, yeah.
Go to the B A first.
That would probably be easier, just go to the town board. No problem.
We don't know.
So, so for these, the next time you come back, so you're gonna be. And you get a structural uh report, I'll, I'll have somebody look at the building, if you can, you just could stay on the third story and it's. Bring them back for approval structurally to go get that.
What can you say, you're serious?
He's gonna need it, he's gonna need a use there that puts into storage.
Can we say the time?
Good night.
The town board is not. That's on change, they're not.